Don't see anything. Approval of minutes from October 15th. Did everyone get a chance to review them? Is there anything to discuss or any modifications? Or if we're ready to make a motion, we can do that.
I'm okay, Cindy.
I'm good.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Clarksburg School Committee meeting minutes from Thursday, October 15th, 2020.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. The financial statement. I did want to have a little discussion on a few items tonight that I spoke with both the superintendent and the assistant superintendent about earlier in the week, and I just thought it would be useful for them to go over the same areas of concern that I had, just for you guys as well. Some things that jumped out at me, so Jen, I don't know if you want me to point out each one, or if you kind of have them all ready to go, however you want to proceed.
Yeah, I kind of have some notes if you want me to go through my thing and find us anything.
Yep, sure, I'm following along.
Yep, so overall, the fiscal year 21 budget still needs to be scrubbed. And what I mean by that is I need to realign the dollars with any grant funds that we have, and then proof the budget to make sure all of the accounts are hitting appropriately. In some of the line items, you'll see that the percentages of the budget are pretty high already, specifically some technology supplies, some building supplies, and a lot of that has to be has to do with just hitting the wrong GL accounts, and we need to move those items around. Some of the TA lines may look a little goofy, and that's mostly because we need to start moving dollars to grants. So most of my time has been focused on closing up fiscal year 20. So November into December, we clean up the first quarter of the budget and then go from there. So specifically, when you look at building improvements, some of those lines, we changed and we pushed down to building maintenance. Again, some IT lines we need to look at. So again, the overall picture is fine, but when you get into the details, there definitely needs to be some lines realigned. And, you know, overall, I think, you know, we've tried to capture as much as we can into the grants, but from time to time, things slip through and hit the budget rather than the grant. So the next couple of weeks will be spent realigning the dollars as such. There are some lines that the percentages are going to remain high, but I'm not ready to talk to you about those lines quite yet. Do I recall if there was anything else you wanted me to add?
No, I think that covered it for me. Cindy or Eric, did you have anything specific in the budget you wanted to have addressed tonight?
I guess my question, that answers one of my questions, just because some of those high percentages I was wondering about, but that makes sense. My only question then would be, is this something that we should be approving, or should we wait until there's the changes are made and then approve that?
I think the guise of the whole school committee is looking at the bottom line, and provided that we're not overspent in the bottom line, I think it's within the lines.
Yep.
But that's totally at your discretion.
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with it as well.
I can add, just, I mean, just as an example, I know that on page four, like our our maintenance of grounds is at 400%, which is a big percentage that you might be looking at. We had two down trees in that last storm, and the DPW could not, could not take those away, and we had to hire someone to do that. That's not something that would typically, I mean, that was an unforeseen cost, and we put it in that line because it's it's maintenance of the grounds because we wanted to share the trees, but like, that was just an unforeseen thing that we came up against, and I know, I see that's a high percentage, so I can at least throw that one out there and say that could be, you know, that's one.
Yeah, and you know, along those lines, when you see operation and maintenance of plant, that supply line was reduced because we had money down below in the supply line under maintenance of buildings. So when I say that they're they're in the right church, wrong pew, so to say, they just need to be realigned.
That makes sense, so I will make a motion to approve the current financial statement for fiscal year 21.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Jen. That brings us to the principals' report. Tara, are you ready?
I am. I'll share my screen with you. Get ready for the pictures of children. Here we go.
It's my favorite part.
Aimed to please. So hopefully, you can now see my screen. Yes, okay. Over here, so what, a couple of things just on my agenda to talk about tonight are the potential for some early release days added to the calendar. A request for that from me to you, talking about snow days and how we'll handle that. This is a big topic in many districts right now across the state about how we're handling snow days. I, of course, have snapshots of some in-person learning that nobody gets to see but us internally, since we have no visitors. And then just a couple of small things that I want to share with you at the end about, you know, how we're doing in the building with our cleaning and things like that, and and in some other small items that may be on the horizon. But let me start with just some pictures. So we have students who are taking the advantage of the fall holidays and themes to write stories, learning about beginning, middles, and ends, and their work is displayed for each other to see. We have students who are in older grades typing out their stories with beginning, middles, and ends, and highlighting and analyzing their writing, and teachers are recognizing their work displayed in classrooms and hallways. We have kindergartners working on patterns and figuring out how to set up color patterns using manipulatives. So again, just still a variety of different kinds of learning that you would expect to see. It's all happening. We have, we have, oh, I should say, this class, this, this one here, I also want to note that this has been our first full week of kindergarten for full day learning. If we get to tomorrow, we've made it for the whole week, and I know that Kathy Howes on this call, she's probably as tired as these kids are, and and this is a kindergartner who's doing the pattern, so it made me think of this. They've done a phenomenal job. Kathy has, has brought up the point that these kindergartners have transitioned three times, and what is it, Kathy? Thirty, thirty-three days? Something like that, right? There's, I think she tried to hit her unmute button.
Yeah, 35 days and three transitions.
Transitions. They transitioned from a room in the other wing to this classroom, and now they've transitioned again to full day learning, and boy, they're resilient. They're gonna, they're gonna be pretty resilient by the time they get to get all the way through here. Because they've transitioned beautifully. You know, it's always true that kids are a lot stronger than us. They, they make it through and they make it look easy. And the kindergartners have made this look easy, and so has the staff, that Kathy and and the TAs who are working with her have, have done an incredible job to transition again, to bring our kindergartners in full day. And staff has supported that with moving things again and getting everything ready. So they're doing a great job. And speaking of transition, so that was my lead into this slide, because our kids transition a lot to from inside to outside. This is a third grade class where they're taking their wobble chairs outside. I caught them right when they were about to go outside with their wobble chairs. I didn't, you know, and I said, hey, show me, show me your chairs, and they, they did a little, you know, powerlifting with these very super, super light, they're plastic, they're super light chairs. They were on their way outside with the wobble chairs so that they could do a lesson outside. We bundle up and get our coats on, and we still go outside, although today was pretty nice. They also have these wobble chairs inside, so that they have a variety of seating in this, this particular classroom. And this gives me, you know, a way to also recognize, this is Kim Rego's classroom, her, I know Mary Quinto also have recently done Donors Choose fundraisers, because these wobble chairs came from a Donors Choose program, and just if, for folks who don't know, some of our teachers put those, those fundraisers out, and some of those are funded by people we don't even know who donate online to projects. So the teachers go on and they say, you know, I wish that I had, you know, 20 wobble chairs and, you know, this other thing, or, you know, this would make learning really great in my classroom, and they, and then people fund those projects. And so it's not, wasn't even bought out of school funds. This was donations to our school. I think Mary Quinto got a carport. She's looking forward to the spring when there's nice weather again, since all of our tents blew down. She, she's ready with a carport for the spring that she got through a Donors Choose project. So just wanted to make mention of that, that our, our staff is pretty resourceful in finding outside resources to help fund our, our inside learning and outside learning. And speaking of outside learning, we do have students who are taking advantage of, of, you know, our benches. This is our buddy bench from our eighth graders from last year. We can't really have buddies sit on the same bench together, but if we want to go outside and learn, and we can't because of spacing issues in our bubbles, but if we want to go outside and learn, we can sit on the buddy bench and use it, and take our clipboards out, and do some of our work outside. And when we need a break, we could throw a ball at the wall too, just to get our energy out. I mean, just, I I want to say that kids are getting breaks, they're going outside, they're, they're getting their energy out when they, they need to, and we're trying to space those things out for them, so they have some time to move around too. And then just our staff, I have been talking about our staff through some of these pictures, but this is Mrs. Pecore teaching an art lesson to the kindergartners in their full day program now. They're doing a fabulous job with in-person teaching and making all the adjustments that they've had to make for make for in-person teaching, and then we've still got teachers in closets basically doing remote teaching to students who may be at home or wherever, we're finding nooks and crannies for them to get on a computer, so they can transfer from an in-person setting to maybe the next five minutes being an online setting. And they keep going back and forth depending on what they teach, who they teach, how they teach. The staff has been really flexible and going through all kinds of different mediums to be able to deliver instruction this year. And that kind of is setting me up to say my, my next thing, which is, is therefore, I think that our staff, you know, carrying this heavy weight of trying to do it all, really, they've taken on a lot, and I would like to request that, when you look at our calendar, we have some Fridays that are built in as half-days. They were part of our original calendar to have some early release days to do some professional development. I know that Florida and Row have gone to early release Fridays because it's been a heavy lift for teachers, for all of the staff to be able to, to do this work that we're doing this year. And so when I looked at the calendar for November, December, and January, what I feel like our staff needs is, is some more time to be able to adequately prepare and to be able to move back and forth between these, these different situations of being in a hybrid. And, and, you know, I think when I look at the other schools in the union who are doing this already, and thinking about how our staff has, you know, more, way more remote learners that, that we have to accommodate, I kind of feel like it would be a fair move to be able to give them some, some more time to be able to do this work, right? They're doing it, and they're, 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 they're working hard, but they're here at night, they're here on Saturday, they're here on Sunday. They're doing what they have to do, but they're, they're really, you know, they're at a point where I feel like we need to help them out a little bit. So my, my question on the table tonight would be for us to consider doing early release Fridays for November, December, and January, which would, would, you know, as it stands, add on, you know, two in November, two in December, and three in January to the original calendar that we already have. The afternoons could be asynchronous work for students to do, so teachers could assign something that students could work on, but it wouldn't be a synchronous live session on Friday afternoon. So I don't know if there is any discussion about, you know, if anybody wants to chime in and share anything around that topic or ask me some questions about it, but I am requesting that we alter the calendar, if possible.
Tara, can you speak to the content, maybe a little bit of professional development would focus on?
Yeah, I mean, I think that more than, I mean, so, a couple of things. Just in the last week, we have purchased two more software programs, Kami and vocabulary. They're online learning tools. One helps students take PDFs and write in them or on them. So now teachers have a new tool to use in remote learning situations. They also, when we looked at data, we noticed that vocabulary was, was kind of low, one of our low points, and in response to that, you know, some teachers who had been trying out this online learning platform of vocabulary learning and spent her own money to do that, and started to teach her own self how to use that, you know, brought it to the staff's attention during our data analysis, and we thought it would be a great program to use school-wide, to have consistency around that. So, you know, so we purchased that, and I have the resources through grants to be able to do that for them. When do they learn how to, you know, do that, use that? Integrate it into what they're already doing? They, you know, they kind of, right now, they, they do it whenever they can do it. So I think it would afford them a little bit of space and time to be able to do things like that as we're enhancing our remote learning options, and I know that there is, you know, because there's, so the professional development could be some training, to answer your question, around how to use some of the resources that are coming in, how to better use the resources we have. Beyond that, honestly, I think a lot of it would be for planning. Teachers are staying late to be able to prepare work for our remote learners at home. You know, unlike, I know one of our schools in the union, their remote learners go to an outside, another school, an online school, to get their instruction, and we chose to do this in-house, which then puts the burden on our staff to be able to do both and prepare things for our learners who have opted out and they're at home while still trying to figure out how to do everything that we're doing for our in-person learners. So sometimes it's, it's a matter of just needing a little bit of extra time to do that preparation. In addition, another struggle that I keep hearing from teachers is, you know, how do you do centers and small groups when you can't share materials? You know, traditionally, students play games together and do different things where they're interacting with some of the same materials, and now teachers find themselves in a situation where they've got to make multiple copies of a game, of materials, of things. So their centers, their small group time, their time to differentiate instruction is, is very different than what it would be on a normal year. And so they find themselves sort of scrambling to figure out, A, they're collaborating with each other when we have those Friday times, or when we have some collaboration periods built into our contract. They're scrambling to talk to each other to figure out, well, how are you doing this, and how, you know, what's, what are you figuring out? So they need that time to talk to each other, and then they honestly need time to be able to put that stuff together, to just build those pieces that they haven't had to have in place before. So I think it's a combination of some professional development and/or training, and really some planning time to be able to pull all of this off. Does that help answer or clarify what this time would, would go towards?
Yes, it does. It helps clarify it a little bit, so thank you. You know, just speaking on behalf of myself, and I haven't obviously had a lot of time to digest this request, but, you know, one of my concerns is, is, first of all, I want to be sensitive to the teachers' needs. They are doing amazing work, and I realize how difficult this environment it is, but I worry about, you know, another transition for kids. We've had this kind of ongoing effort, coordinated effort, to restore as much in-person learning as possible. I worry about kids with special needs who respond better to in-person school. So those are some of the ideas that are just kind of like initially coming in, in my head. So I don't know if Laura and Cindy have some thoughts. Again, I want to be supportive of them and what they need, but also at the same time, making sure that we're not adding additional transitions for kids, and like I said, kids who are on IEPs and whatnot, who benefit from being in school for longer durations of time, you know, taking away that from them as well. So just some food for thought, maybe some discussion around those topics.
And I think that those are valid concerns and questions, and we have, like I said at our NBS union meeting, you know, we did this very slow transition into school versus our, my peers at other schools who kind of, you know, they jumped right in and they, everybody was there full day right away in Florida, or Savoy. We did a much slower fade-in process, which created transitions and created lots of, we already talked about kindergarten, having three different transitions in 35 days. So I do feel like, you know, we, we we have to be sensitive to those transitions and the number and the amount of transitions that we have in a given amount of time. So I think it's a valid concern. Same time, as we said, and Kathy can, can echo, you know, those transitions for the kids have been pretty smooth, and they have weathered them beautifully. So, you know, in terms of transitions, I worry about our staff being able to maintain this level of, of what they're giving to keep all the pieces rolling smoothly as we go through and do this work.
If I can say, I agree, and I think it's a really important time that we need to take care of our students and our staff and our families. I think we're all going through, you know, some pretty big changes and transitions in all of our lives. I just wanted to clarify, so we're talking about a Friday morning in person, correct?
That's right, which presents a problem for junior high in particular, which I didn't address, but I can address right now. Because we only have sixth and eighth grade coming in person in the morning currently. And so this, if we did this model, what I would propose is alternating our seventh grade coming in, in the morning every other Friday versus our sixth through eighth, so that they wouldn't constantly miss an in-person Friday at all. You know, they would, if we left it as-is, they would not be in on Friday anytime. So we would want to do something like that. And also, Eric, to, to speak to our students with, with high needs, we can still, you know, figure out a schedule where we allow more time in the building potentially on another day if this Friday afternoon impacts a certain group of students, right? So we have, we have students who are coming in in different pockets right now, are students who have high needs. They, they might not be here every day consistently in the afternoon or in the morning, and so we can look at adjusting some schedules also to make sure that, we don't want anybody to lose, you know, a lot of time in person if we can help it, particularly our students with high needs. But we also, you know, want to balance that out with, again, you know, all the things that I said about what we need to do as a whole school to sustain this level of what we're doing.
Tara, I assume you've spoken with all the teachers about this. Are they pretty unanimous in wanting this change to be made?
Yeah, they, they, they do. You know, I feel, and honestly, I think October, November gets to be a hard time of year every year. It's in this, in a typical school year, you hit a moment in time in the calendar when things kind of come together and it feels like a lot. But this is a little bit different, where it feels like people are stretched pretty thin, and and, and it's, it's hard, and I want to, I want to be able to make sure, you know, and I think that when I look at the other schools around us, and the amount of in-person learning that is being provided by our neighboring schools, I think we've done a pretty good job of what we've been able to offer. And, and I want to, and I want to see that through. I want to be able to continue that, that work to the level that we are at, plus more. I know there's places where we can be much better, honestly, still, in terms of differentiating, in terms of, you know, what those small groups look like, in terms of some of our, our online learning, still. So.
Can I ask one other question? So are you at this time just asking for this change, again, just at this time, for November, December, and January?
I am, in the hope.
Revisit it again at another time if it feels like that's needed and going well, or if there's an issue, we could revisit it?
Yes, and that's what I believe, and John, maybe you can weigh into it. I'm pretty sure that's what Florida is doing at this point, that it's through January. Savoy, are they in the same?
Just to clarify, Savoy's not doing it, but Florida's doing it through January. Row has just changed your schedule for now, they didn't say a date on it, but just to back up, I guess, you know, Tara and I have talked about this. The reason, some of the reason, like she said, we did it for the other schools was to help to ensure that the teachers would have time on a Friday to, as you mentioned, do some planning, do some collaborating, work on some of the professional development Tara talked about, with some of the new technology we're using, and anything else that we need to put into that time period, but, you know, truthfully, another big piece of this is when I was on my monthly NSIP program, the induction program in my third year now, one of the questions to say on that was, what are you doing for your teachers to make sure that you are making them feel supported and during this stressful time? Because, I mean, most of it was, it was, you know, across the state, there's only 14 school districts, last time I checked, that are full in-person learning. Really, Clarksburg is, should be the 15th one, because we have K through 5 in person now all day, and we have 6, 7, 8 for a half a day, which is much more than most hybrids are doing. Elaborating that during my report, but, you know, and there's been a lot of focus on how with a lot of the changes, it's certainly is, it's a new way of doing school, and I think our, our teachers and our staff and our principal in Clarksburg have all done tremendous job, you know, with your, with your support as a school committee, and I think this would be something, given that it's, for now, it's for November, December, and January, I think it'd be something that I certainly do support, just because I think the time is going to be useful for the teachers, but it's also useful for the staff too. So that's what we're trying to make sure we do, is to, to support the needs of the students and support the needs, planning needs of the staff as well.
Yeah, I just, thank you, John. I just have one comment, which was something that I actually was just waiting to bring up myself. I agree with everything that's been said. First and foremost, I want to support the teachers, and I want to do what's right for the kids. As well, I just want us to think also about the effect this might have on the parents, and, you know, all the changes they've already had to keep up with, basically, and make adjustments for, and just childcare issues. Someone just made a comment in our, that I'll just read here if I can find her, if someone else has it, well, here it is, chat. Rich Blackmore, I don't know if everyone can see the chat, just said, what about childcare issues associated with having all those half-days? For many parents, this will mean having to take off a lot of time from work for childcare, on top of all the half-days and those school days we already have in the coming months. So I was going to raise that issue as well. I just think it's worth having a discussion and get your thoughts on those comments. Eric or Cindy also, if you want to chime in on that as well?
Yeah, I think it's definitely a relevant concern to echo what that gentleman just said, given all the time that we're going to have off in the next couple of months. Anyways, it does make it extremely challenging, you know, for parents orchestrate and whatnot. And, you know, one of the other questions I was thinking, I don't know if this has been asked either, but what was the, what was the, what were the variables for deciding on the amount of time by making all the the half-day Fridays? Is that what kind of the anticipation is in order to get trained on these new programs? Is it kind of like an arbitrary amount of time? Is there some way to look at allowing the teachers the time that they're going to need, but maybe on a little less of a frequent basis? Again, just growing points out for discussion.
Yeah. Well, I, sorry.
Okay, so one of the challenges, I think, is that it's, it's very difficult to staff schools right now. We don't have any, with our, you know, never mind the policy about letting other people in this building that are going other places. And just, I want to just clarify one thing, is that I don't go in any of the MBSU buildings. That's one of the rules we made, but I'd have my one bubble school, I guess, would be Clarksburg because of the construction, a couple of meetings we had to have in Tara's office. So I'm not going into the school, just into the main office. But anyways, we do not have substitutes this year, really. So we don't have, so we have people that are out of the building because, right? I mean, the rule is if you're sick, you stay home. If you have symptoms, you're sent home. If you, and that is working. I can reflect back on the, the governor's call earlier this week where he referred to schools not being spreaders. The data shows that the virus is not being, you know, people were worried about the schools reopening and the virus going to spread, but we've taken all these precautions to keep people distanced, to have, people wear masks all day, to have, not allow visitors in the school, to enforce the travel regulations, to have people go home when they're sick. So I think schools are a good model for, if the, the general public was following the rules of the school are doing, we'd have a lot less transmission. Now, granted, our community is very low. We know that. And so is Berkshire County at this point, but there has been an uptick even in some towns around us like North Adams, Pittsfield. And really, in Berkshire County, there are only, well, there's the three schools that we have in MBSU, which of course Row is not in Berkshire County. Clarksburg is also basically a full in-person model. But every other school district around us is in some kind of hybrid where they're going two days a week, one day off, and then another group comes in for two days. So the kids are only in school for two days a week, which truthfully is getting a lot of pushback at the state level. We did a data collection this week because the state is really focused on synchronous versus asynchronous and in-person learning. And really, the whole study was focused on hybrid and remote, and we were one of the few schools that can say that our, our kids are in school all day, full day, every day, for K through five and a full half-day for the other children. And if we could do a full day, and had a space to do it, we'd be having six, seven, eight, if we need more space. So we'll touch on that later. But I think it's important to know that this is, it makes it more difficult to have your normal, regular schedule for teachers. It makes it hard to have your regular collaboration time during the day. It's, it's involving a lot more planning. And we just felt that by doing it on a Friday, it would allow the teachers to do some professional development and also get a jumpstart on their planning for the upcoming week, the following week. Sorry.
No, yeah. I recognize that this is another request of parents and of a group of parents who have been incredibly, you know, have been great partners in opening this school up in terms of, you know, from how you drop off to, to, you know, the staggered start in and, and all of it. And we were very thankful for this community working with us to be able to open the way we've opened. But I will reiterate some of what John is saying. We don't have subs. Mike Peters, our custodian, was out on Tuesday, and I was the custodian, and I cleaned the bathrooms, and I, you know, did the cleaning protocol that we have all day long. We're, we're, that's how stretched we are. We had three staff members who had to be home because they were awaiting COVID tests over the last two weeks. When, you know, and they can't come back until they get their test results, and then somebody's got to cover that class. And so, you know, sometimes it's, it's office staff, sometimes it's pulling someone from somewhere else. And we're trying to also maintain bubbles, you know, where we're not crossing over into different cohorts of, of classes. And so when you're constantly on the fly, trying to do, wear many different hats like never before, something gives. And, and I think that what the teachers are feeling is that they're being asked to do whatever needs to be done at this point to keep everything floating. And, and that's, I just have to say, it's hard to sustain. It's very difficult to, and while I totally recognize what Mr. Blackmore is saying in the comment about the, the stress and strain that, that added, you know, half-day Friday will bring to families. It's a total of seven. I, I mean, I guess in, in response to, you know, how was that sort of picked? I mean, I guess you could dial it back a little bit, but then it becomes a little bit confusing about even, you know, well, which Friday is it? Like if you just added, you know, four Fridays instead of making it a clear Friday, every Friday, every Friday we do this, then you're, is it this Friday that is a half-day? Is it next Friday? I mean, I mean, just even consistency for families to know, you know, this is what it is. Maybe more confusing to, to just add in some more Fridays and not have it be, you know, because it's, it's a set amount of time. And we're talking about, you know, we already had some Fridays on the calendar anyway, and there's these Fridays that you can see that were already off. And not here at all. It just felt like for consistency's sake, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't feel as random to just add in a couple more. And honestly, people need it. Staff needs that, we, we sort of need that time to be able to regroup sometimes after we're, we're trying to, to do these different things and wear these different hats. The other thing that's happening, just, you know, so people are really aware of what our day looks like in here. Not only when staff have a COVID test that they're awaiting results for and have to quarantine at home, so we lose staff, we're also losing students that way, too, right? So when a student has to quarantine and be at home, the teacher has to scramble to get materials ready for the child who's going to stay at home. They are sinking in because we're able to do live sessions, but, you know, depending on the class and the grade level and the age, you know, the, the teacher has to, on the fly, say here, oh, so-and-so, you know, it was just yesterday where we found out that this child's at home, they're sick, they're going to quarantine. We're, we're all erring on the side of caution, even if they, you know, aren't quarantined because they're waiting a test. They're sick, they have a sore throat, they have to go to the doctors, now they're going to stay home, but we still want them to learn. So the teacher is grabbing their computer and, and trying to run off some, some work for them because they weren't anticipating this, that, that, that the child was going to be at home that day. And so what I'm trying to say is, is it looks different than a typical year because they're on the fly saying, oh, I have two children who are staying home this week, or tomorrow, or today, or I just found out this morning at 8:15, and my class starts at 8:30, and I've got to get some things ready because the parent wants to come and pick the stuff up so the child can engage. And we want the child to engage when they're at home, because they can't be here because we're trying to keep our school safe, because we're trying to keep it open. Right? So, so there's these, these, just these different pieces that all of a sudden teachers find themselves in these shoes of, of of having to really tap dance pretty quickly. And, and then what gives, right? So what would have been happening in those, that time when they're trying to pull all these resources together at the last minute? Something else gives, that, that prep or planning that they were trying to do for, you know, the rest of the kids in the classroom. So, so the seams are sort of just really kind of pulling apart, honestly. And, and I think that, you know, had I had some more forethought, I mean, in terms of, of how this affects families, I just wish that I had thought of this earlier, honestly. And then, and I take responsibility for not thinking about how this would sort of play out, but I guess I, you know, all of us are learning as we go, and as we're trying to, again, keep schools open, keep any child who has to remote learn engaged, it keeps an amount of work that we weren't anticipating to be able to do those things.
Thank you for everything that you've just said. And John, for you, for what you said as well. It answers all my questions. I think we owe this to our teachers. I think we're getting the best of them. I mean, we always do, but they're just going above and beyond. I think we need to continue to get that from them. And I think that this would help, help them to achieve that, in my opinion.
I have to say, or I would like to say that I agree with all of that. I also hear the struggle for families, and I understand that that's difficult. But I believe that if we can help support our teachers getting through this time, that benefits our students. And I think it's significant, and I think it sounds like they really need this.
And this is, you know, it's a time of change and of adapting to different things. And I think, you know, it will, from now, at least for the next few months, show some consistency on Fridays, and it will be a schedule to follow. So, you know, I think we can do it. I think it's necessary. It's my opinion. Eric, did you have anything else to add? Or do we feel ready to vote on something?
I don't have anything else to add at this point.
Are you okay with everything that has been discussed?
Yeah, I mean, I, I still have some apprehensions, but I want to support the teachers as well. I don't want to come across as being unsupportive because I'm not. They are doing incredible work and, you know, and I think it's unprecedented times, not just for schools and educators, but everybody who's in healthcare or, you know, many, many professions where they're taking care of people who are facing similar struggles. So, you know, as Tara said, we learn as we go along, so.
So Tara or John, are we, do you want us to take a vote on this issue? Is that just make a motion to accept the adjusted calendar for Friday?
I shouldn't vote on it. It's a new business. That's where it's listed on the agenda, so.
Okay, all right. Let me get back to my agenda.
No, I'm not done. I was. So that brings me to my next topic, which I, 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 I don't have as much passion around. So, snow days. Again, many schools in the area are asking this question about whether or not we close and have a traditional snow day. You know, our Blizzard bags are over, that, that ship has sailed. And we were moving forward with, you know, it had to spin a typical year, you know, we would, we would just have snow days. But it begs the question that when you, you're able to do remote learning, you know, do you integrate some of that remote learning into a potential snow day to avoid adding on to the end of the calendar? Our current end of the year is Tuesday, June 15th. That's with no snow days added in. That's just the hard date of this is where, when we end. So if we were to have a snow day tomorrow and everybody stayed home, our next, you know, we would move the, the end of the calendar to June 16th. That's the situation we're in currently. So I surveyed staff just to see how they would feel, whether they would want to, you know, close and have a traditional snow day that just, you know, we added on to the end. And there were about three people who felt that that was a good idea. There were about four people who said that they would, would prefer to teach from home and keep it a, you know, a teaching day. So there's no day added at the end of the calendar. And then a lot of people were in the middle and said, you know, I think this is similar to what we did a couple of years ago with the Blizzard bags, where we said, what if we had a couple of snow days that were on our calendar, you know, that we built in, and then after we hit a certain point, we would, we would try to do the Blizzard bags that we had in place at that time. And so people were, you know, sort of, it was reminiscing about that in terms of, could we do something like that where we, we did some snow days? And then we did some remote learning days. And then somebody else had a very interesting comment that they contributed that said, you know, is it possible to also do a half-day remote learning day on a snow day? That would not add a day to the end of the calendar. And so that was another option that I hadn't thought of either. I truly have no strong and hard opinion about this, and I know that some people do. So I, but I think that we do need to make a decision about how we, as a school, will handle snow days or inclement weather days this school year, because we're already, we've already seen three days of some snow flurries coming down. So I think, you know, this is, this is where staff fall with the whole topic. Again, I don't have a dog in the race around this. I think we could do any which way. You know, I was more passionate about the Fridays and really wanting to make sure our staff was supported in that way. But this, build a snowman or learn, either way, it's fine. So is this a new business thing, too, John, that you wrote on then?
Yeah, I wouldn't vote until then. I just wanted to just clarify real quickly. This is coming from the commissioner. He was getting a lot of questions from districts across the state, most of whom are in a remote or hybrid, hybrid model, I should say. And the question was, you know, could districts opt for that, for remote learning on snow days? He came back and said, this is a local decision. This is something that each individual district has to decide for themselves, if they want to do that or not. Just so you know, there's some, some clarification on Desi about what has to be done on a remote day, just like any remote day, basically, to, to make it count as a full school day. So it says, there's four points. One says, there's procedures for all students to participate in remote learning, including a system tracking attendance and participation. Two, remote work shall be aligned to standards. Three, a policy for issuing grades, issuing grades for students' remote academic work. Four, teachers and administrators shall regularly communicate with students and their parents and guardians in regard to any support that is needed during the day. So basically, it's, you know, they're providing the same school day we would do on a regular remote day, like we did those two days, excuse me, when we had to have the wiring worked on in the school, we did remote learning. So this is something that I guess would, I would say, we usually get pretty advanced forecasts and, you know, so we're going to call a snow day. A lot of times we try to call it, you know, night before if we can, on a big storm, families can plan, going back to family planning. And I would think there's nothing worse than getting that call at 6:30 in the morning, if you know, then, if you can, we can try to avoid that. That's what we're trying to do with this situation. I feel the same way as Tara. I'm, I'm, either way, it's how we also be working on June 30th, or whatever day it'll be, if we have school or not. But I know we're scheduled to go to June 15th, and the winter's already starting out a little bit challenging already. I mean, my thing I would suggest if we're going to go with this is maybe we consider something like the Blizzard bags, we just designate that we're only going to do a cer- certain amount of days. Or not, or just say there's snow days, whatever you think is best. I know the teachers have weighed in, which is good. And I think that's something for us to consider, just what's best for our school. Savoy approved it, just to say no other MBSU schools. Savoy approved using remote on snow days when they can. I'm pretty sure that Florida and Row are going to vote against it. So just so you know, that's where the other MBSU schools stand.
Can I ask a quick question about the, the other option that someone mentioned about the half-days? Like, John, would that meet the qualifications that Desi's putting out there if we did a half-day of remote? To me, in my mind, I'm picturing something similar to a Blizzard bag where you're literally having this work that only, I guess you, is enough to get you to 11:30, meaning a half-day, so that you are truly having a snow day the other part, portion of the day, not doing asynchronous learning.
Yes, it would. A half-day of learning would, would suffice for a full, like, for example, these days on Friday that are half-days, they still kind of is a day of school. So I would suggest this, too. If we do something of that nature, I would say a half-day of a solid remote learning plan would be better than a day on June 24th. Put it out there, in terms of being more productive. That would be the one thing I would say in favor. favor of this. I would say, you know, we certainly should discuss maybe putting a number of days that we want to do this, and so we don't exceed that number of days. Something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
I just see the question popping up. Am I unmuted? Okay, you can hear me. So why don't they build into the calendar? I mean, I don't know. Add on the day, if there's a snow day, we add it on to the end. I could, I, you know, we could always, we know that it's hap- we have to add on the days to the end. So I guess in my mind, you're only adding those days on anyway if you have snow. So you could put five snowflakes on the calendar. And then if you only had two, you would only go to the second one. But I guess it always confused me, because then I'd have to remember, if I had five snowflakes on the calendar, then I'd have to remember how many actual snow days we have. So I just try to add on when we have them. I add them on, update the calendar versus subtracting the snowflakes away from the calendar. I don't know if that helps, but either way, you're, you're going over the, the set number of days. You have to maintain the number of days, which is 170 this year. It was usually 180. You got to go to school that many days, whether you write 185 days down on the calendar and then go backwards, or you put 180 down and go forward. It's a creative math either way. Could you go?
If you don't, if you don't go, if you don't have a snow day, you subtract five days off. You do it with the five. It's, it's half dozen of one, six of the others. I mean, it's, either way, it's the same. This way, you know what the, the, the last day of school is, and if we have a snow day, you add one on to it. That's basically what we do.
Yeah, and to answer your question, you can't keep the, you can't keep the five extra days on, because teachers have a contract for the number of days that they're teaching. So you couldn't go over that number of days and keep those days on there. So if, I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, which I, I think is a great clarifying question, just for people who, you know, for, for everybody to hear, I mean, I, you can't, if I added five days on and said, June 21st is our last day, we have to take them off if we didn't have the snow days, because the teachers can't by contract over the number of days that the state requires students to be in school.
And that's the same for all districts too. You can't go over the days that teachers have in their contract, so.
Right, right.
Calendar or not, they subtract them off, because you can't go, you have to pay them for more. We don't have that in the budget, so.
Correct, right. I hope that clarifies the question. So I guess we'll save the, unless you want to talk more about it.
Yeah, I just, I had one before, and Cindy kind of asked the question I was going to ask. I've been thinking a lot about this topic since my kids think about this topic now that it starts to snow.
Yeah.
And so I kind of went through each scenario in my head. It's nice to have the option to do remote learning and save the days on the end. It's nice to let the kids have a snow day, an old-fashioned, traditional snow day, where they can play in the snow and bake cookies and sit in front of the fire, watch movies, you know, just kind of be kids on a snow day. And, and I would think for the teachers too, to get a break. And, and kind of what I came up with in, in my head too, was similar to what we did with the Blizzard Bags, to kind of balance it out. So I, I mean, again, I don't, I think there's pros and cons to each. I'm glad you reached out to the staff. I think that was great, and it's nice to have this information in front of us. So I guess that's where I'm sitting with it. But yeah, we can wait to.
Can I ask one more question before we move on?
Okay, and I wanted to let Eric talk, if he had anything to add as well. So, go ahead, Cindy.
Okay, thank you. So June 15th is our last day as of right now. I just want to clarify. So if we were to propose something like three snow days, then would June 18th become our last day, or June 21st?
18th.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure if I'm pushing a little too far for this, but if we were to, if we were to propose something like that, and then after that, any snow day, could that become a half-day remote day?
I don't see why not.
Just putting that out there for some thought. Okay, thank you.
Eric, did you want to add anything?
I'm much simpler. I like option orange. I like a three-day. I agree with you, Laura. There's a value a little bit to a couple of snow days throughout the winter. Yeah, if I were to pick, I would choose that. I think that makes a lot of sense.
These are something we have to plan for too. I apologize for interrupting. Like, we couldn't just, if a flash storm came up on, you know, tomorrow, and we had to send the kids home with Chromebooks, that is a snow day, you know. So there's, this is only for days that, that we could plan for, because we have a forecast saying that it's going to be really bad on Friday, and we know we're not going to be able to have school. So we would send the kids home with all their work, so they could plan with their families to be home, and they wouldn't get that call. If we have a regular snow day, where we have a, you know, where if a storm hits and it hits harder than we thought it was going to be, then we would not have the option for remote learning, because the kids wouldn't have all their materials home with them. So just want to make that clarification.
Right, which I guess could potentially put you in a place where you could have three snow days, and then you could have a one hit from nowhere, and then you're sitting at four. So that puts you on the week of June 21st into that Monday. Just saying, you know, I, I think that John's point is, we have to, we have to see that one, that fourth one coming. If, if you were going with what I hear you, it sounds like you're going with is, is some sort of, maybe three, and then, then go half-day remote learning days, you might be stuck with a fourth. So maybe you do two, and then, just in case the other one puts you in a hurry. I'm just saying. Because you never know, one could just whip up. Because that's what happened last year. We did, the last year we did Blizzard Bags. We did have a couple of days that we, we didn't see coming. So it happens.
Yeah, I think we can have some language in there with that, you know, that could always come up. I mean, there could be something out of the blue that we wouldn't be prepared for, for sure. I did also, which I didn't say, I did like that option that Tara, you mentioned for the half-days. Is that something that we work putting out to the other teachers? I mean, that's not something they all had a chance to work on, do you think?
Um.
That's not a bad option either. Kind of the best of both worlds.
Right, I think. I think that, well, for those people, there's a, the majority are in that yellow zone of a combination of snow days and remote days. I don't think, I'm just going to go out on a limb here and say that if, for those folks, if they were asked to just teach a half-day remote, on those, when we got to the remote days, I'm not sure if that, you know, I don't see why they would be opposed to that, you know, with that clarity around the amount of time.
Save a day on calendar and have the afternoon to play in the snow. So we can, I guess, like you said, discuss this again later on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I, I'll be quick. I only have a couple more things to get you on. So let me just, let me zip through my last thing. So, oh, that's the wrong slide, sorry. Let me go back. Okay, go back through here. So I just wanted to end by saying, we, we have received the electro, the, the famous electrostatic sprayer that we've been waiting for, for a long time. We're in our hands this week. So we were able to clean the building a little bit faster with the sprayers. And of course, I got to try them out, because I told you I did some custodial work. They're fabulous, and, and it's been a lot in terms of our cleaning, your call. And I also just wanted to make mention that we, there is a, and I'm not sure, I didn't look and see if this was on your part of the agenda, John, there's a, coming from state, a, a pilot program from DESI to do some in-house testing in schools, which we applied to, I don't know that we were, we applied to see if we would be accepted into the pilot program, where there's antigen testing that potentially happened during this pilot testing program. So we're, we're exploring the options of that. And I just wanted to throw that out there to say, we're, we're looking at options as much available. It's, we're not, you know, definite that, you know, this would be the thing that we're going to do. But I think it's interesting that the state is trying a pilot program to test in some schools. I mean, I don't know when that testing even starts, John, when the pilot begins, but we threw our name in the bag for that. So that's all. I'll stop sharing.
Thank you, Tara.
You're welcome.
John, did you have, you want to share a specific report?
Oh, there's a lot, but I'll try to just summarize. So the week started off, as it always does, very busy with a call from the governor and a call from the commissioner on Monday afternoon. The governor's call, if you haven't heard the update yet, he sets some new mandates based on the uptick in the positive cases across the state. You know, we had a run of, I believe, eight days in a row with over 1,000 positive cases, most of which are in Eastern Mass, thankfully, and not here. But, and, you know, yesterday we had 1,600 in the state. So it's concerning how the, the numbers have increased. So those go into effect tomorrow, if you didn't see them. And I know one of the things is yet to be, kind of like a stay-home order from 10, 10 o'clock at night to 5 o'clock in the morning. Restaurants have to close by 9:30. They can still do takeout, but they're in-person seating. You know, masks have to be worn by five-year-olds and up at all times in public places. Schools do have to make exceptions in that, but we do have the rule where our kindergarteners are wearing masks, so it's not a, not an issue for us. But again, going back to, it was a big emphasis on both of those calls, where the commissioner and the governor are talking about schools not being spreaders. And I think, again, it goes back to the following the, the guidance that we've got from the state and our own about wearing masks, staying distant, washing your hands, staying home when you're sick, and just being, taking all those precautions into, into place. And, you know, I know that Tara just mentioned about the testing. That was part of a health forum that we were all on yesterday. It's the second one they've done from, for Berkshire County Schools, put on by Berkshire Health Systems and Dr. Doyle, along with Joan Roy, who's the health administrator in Pittsfield. It's just good information that we, we're staying on top of to make sure that we have the right protocols in place for our school to keep it safe and keep it healthy. And there was a couple of key things in that health forum yesterday. One was, there is obviously a concern about with Halloween just passed and holidays coming up, and concern about social, large social gatherings, either amongst family or friends during those times, because that's what people do, right? That's what we've always done. And now it's important that one of the new, many of the governors said yesterday was, you shouldn't have more than 10 people in an indoor gathering, or 25 in an outdoor gathering. So, you know, I know one of our towns was kind of insisting on having some in-person school community meetings, and we used that as a reason to tell them that we weren't going to do it anymore. So you can probably imagine. That's important. It's important that we're staying distanced and following these guidelines. So one of the messages was, it may be a good idea for the school to partner with the Board of Health in our towns to send out a communication about the importance of following these guidelines through the holiday season, to try to help mitigate the spread of any possible spread of the virus through these larger gatherings that people are still having. And it seems like it's something that might be worthwhile for us to look into, to, to talk to the Clarksburg Department of Public Health, to see if we could, I think we said we do the heavy lifting. We'll, we'll draft a letter, and it might be somebody would like to have signed by the town officials, Department of Public Health, and maybe school committees, superintendent, just to say, hey, we're doing great. Everybody's really, we appreciate how hard everybody's worked to make these adjustments, both in school and at home, and in where every place else we go. But let's really remain diligent through the holidays and try to stay safe. Because the thing is, is implications when we do things that come, that comes back into our school. We're trying to do everything we can to keep the virus out of our school and out of our community. So it was a good message, and we're, we'll talk more about that. But we're going to draft a letter and have it ready for school committees to see, so we can try to get that out before the holidays. Talked about the flu vaccine yesterday, just stating how, you know, there are many families who are getting the vaccine for their child as mandated by the governor, but there are some that aren't. And they're just, you know, they, there's supposedly religious and health exceptions, obviously, but for families that just refuse to get it, they just want to be clear that you cannot exclude those children from school. We think it's, and it's wise for everybody to get it. But if their family feels that strongly against it, a school would not be excluding a child to remote learning, for example, if they didn't take their flu vaccine. Although, they did make a case that the flu cases are starting to rise locally, and just in general, because it's that time of the year. And they made a point of clarifying that you can get the flu and COVID, so it's, they're not exclusive to each other. So it's important that we stay safe. And, you know, the previous call we were on, and earlier in the fall, stated that if you're wearing your mask, then it'll help to prevent the spread of the flu. So I think people realize that we're wearing our masks in school, but we're just asking them when they're in public places to keep their mask on. Tara discussed the testing in schools, and it's something that we know, we're, you know, we think about it a little bit. Is it something that could help us to get some answers quickly? You still would have to go, if you get that quick test in school, you still have to go to your doctor to get a, more of the, the permanent test to make sure it's not a false positive. But at least it would give us some quick information. So then when a child goes home sick, and they're in a classroom, and people start worrying, is that child positive, or is that staff member positive? We'll know in a more timely manner if that happens, because they said a lot of the quick response tests locally have been used already. So there's a bit of a shortage now. Going back to the commissioner's call, there was also a focus on doing a data collection. They required every district this week to submit what kind of learning they're doing, how much asynchronous, how much synchronous learning, how much in-person learning. And like I said, I was, it was, for me, it was good to be completing those for our four districts that are active. It was pretty involved process. But like I said, I did try to emphasize the fact that all the good planning, all the collaboration between the school, the families, the school committees, the staff, the, everybody involved has allowed us to develop a safe plan to reopen our schools. And I think we're way ahead of the game in terms of what I'm hearing, involving learning in school, because our kids are in school all day, every day, for the most part. And I just want to compliment Tara again, and her staff, and the school committee, and all of our families and students as well, for all their work to make this happen. But I feel like we're off to a good start. We want to do everything we can to keep our community and our school safe, so we can stay open. The other thing I just wanted to mention was, one thing too, just we negotiated with Do4 this week. And I just want to really compliment Mike Fletcher at Do4 for working together with us. They adjusted our bill for 170 days. We deal with a couple, another bus company that's not in Berkshire County that does that, has agreeable to work with us. They've adjusted our bill in Clarksburg. And that, you know, we're not being, we've had some days off, we've got some extra bus runs, and we're doing kind of like a, a barter agreement to kind of keep our, our costs reasonable and down. And Do4 has been a very good partner for us. Just want to compliment them on that. The other thing I wanted to mention as well, well, we covered the snow day piece of that. So I think it's important for us to also mention that tomorrow, there's a webinar on ventilation. And one of the things, I know the person that's going to be leading that webinar is going to be talking about is the benefit of the HAPU units, and how those can help with ventilation in schools as the, the weather starts to get colder. And some of the things that I read in his article, we're referring to like some of the things we've done in Clarksburg, you know, fixing the ventilation system that we have, which, which, you know, John led the summer, working together with our contractors to get those fans fixed, for example, on the roof that weren't all working. Installing the HAPU units in the primary wing, before we reopen those classrooms to students. So I have an article I'm going to share with the school committee probably tomorrow, and some information that we got, just to let you know what the, what the information is about this ventilation, from this doctor from Harvard, who is going to help us make sure we're prepared for the winter. This is another example of how our leadership team works constantly to try to get more information to keep our school safe, and to learn about what we need to ventilate our school, how we can keep our families safe, keep our students safe, and keep all of our staff safe. So it's really an ongoing process. And as I said, I appreciate the support from the school committee. Thank you for that. And the rest of that, I think we can just cover during new business. So I'll save it for that.
Moving on to new business. School, school reopening plan.
We did cover some of that one. Tara is, you know, full day. We do have a full day. As you mentioned, kindergarten's going for a full day now. I compliment Kathy Howe, and and the staff members that are all involved in that, along with Principal Barnes for getting those kids into school full-time. I know our director of pupil services, Stephanie Perry, was working together on that because we want to make sure all of our kids at the youngest age got their full support in school. So that's a really, I think, a real positive, I know it's another transition, but it's a real positive transition this week to have our kindergarten students in school full-time. We've been talking about ways we can support our youngest students and, you know, really focused on, we were going to talk a little bit today about some of the efforts to get a pre-K program next year, but we'll save that for our next meeting. So it's just so important to provide those supports to our youngest students. And having the kindergarten kids in school for a full day is really, I think, a real nice addition to our in-person learning plan that Tara and her staff have put together. Any other updates you want to do there for the reopening? I think we covered most of it.
Yeah, I think we have. Kindergarten moved a big lift this week and they made it look easy. So.
Yes, I echo that. What Mr. Rusk just said. Kudos to you Kathy for getting them all back in there and making it easy, as they say.
Thank you, thank you. The kids really truly are resilient. Let's give them the credit.
That's nice. If there's nothing else on that, do you want to move into the schedule?
Yes, this is where you vote.
Yep. So is there any more discussion, Erica, Cindy, or anything else you want to bring up before we do vote on this change for the Fridays?
No.
Okay. Someone want to lead it off here regarding a potential change in the weekly schedule to have a half day of in-person and half day of remote learning on Friday for all students in order to allow the staff time to plan and collaborate consistently? This would be for the remaining Fridays in November, December, and January of 2021 for the time being. Is there a motion?
I think you just said it somewhere.
I was just going to say, I think, I second what you said.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
And then that brings us to the snow days and remote learning discussion and vote regarding the option presented by D E S I, the D E S I Commissioner to plan for remote learning on school days when the weather makes it unsafe to attend school in person during the current school year only. Where are we at? Are we ready to make a decision?
I would like to propose a combination of some snow days and then some half-day snow days. But I'm not, I'm a little stuck on the number that we should be proposing, if anybody else has any ideas. Or if you even agree with that.
I do agree with that, but I concur. It's hard to pick a number.
Do you guys feel like two is enough, given that there will be other potential days that we can't prepare for, for? I mean, I know we say this all the time, but it is 2020. I don't know that we're prepared for anything. So anything could come our way. What do you think?
I was thinking three.
I was two originally. I guess my, what I keep looking at is bumping us into another week of school.
Right. I was initially cool with three as well, but yeah, that's, that's a little bit of a sticking point.
Is it possible to say that we would like to build in two snow days and do, well, I guess I'm really going very far with this at this point, and then do the rest half-days? But we can't predict when the last snow day is, I was going to say, and then use that last one, but we can't do that.
But why can't we just use the half day if they count as days? And then we won't have to add the days on the end. That's what I'm just struggling with. If that's an option to me.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Not doing any full snow days?
Well, I'm just.
Right. Is that what you're?
People are out with that.
I make a suggestion. Okay.
Yes, please.
Maybe you can make a motion that you wanted to build three snow days into the current schedule. So the last day of school would be June 18th. And the rest of the days would be, we would attempt to cover with remote learning. If we do have more unexpected snow days than three, we'd have to adjust, of course, but at least I would cap. You would be saying you'd be authorizing three snow days at this time that the school could use based on like unexpected days or the next three days or however you want to. Doesn't it? I would say, I would just go with days that are unexpected and days we can plan for, we would try to do the remote learning for a half a day.
So are you saying to use those three days first or not, if we can plan for them, then use the half-days to have those as backup?
Let Cindy comment. Let Cindy.
Can I say one thing? So in these back and forth conversations we're having, I guess, part of me and Johnny, if you correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm starting to feel comfortable with is if we're bordering okay with having half-days as our snow days, why not build in two? We know we're safe with staying within that week and use remote days after that. If we have to, can we stay in our motion that we would like to revisit this in the winter if things get bad, if we, whatever we need to, can we revisit the calendar at another time? Or is that off the table once we do this?
No, you can, you don't have to vote anything tonight. You could say, we want to just table this until December and think about it a little more. Because I would hope, for example, that, you know, we've got two and a half weeks basically left in November school schedule, then it's December. So I would say if you're not sure about exactly what you want to do tonight, I would table it and bring it back for the December meeting. You can vote on it then.
I'm just a little nervous. We might get a snow day at this point.
Well, then that would be your true legit snow day, right? I mean, then you could let the universe sort of, you know, determine it for you. But, you know, I remember the one year, we didn't, we didn't vote on it till January, I think.
It's true.
And we had had one in December. So it was like, we already had one snow day and we were at a point where people felt like, okay, how's the winter looking? And, and it was, you know, yeah, it's a snow day. So it was like, maybe, yeah, I think your, your cooling off might be a good idea to help kind of sort it out. I don't, I don't see why you'd do it tonight.
I don't, yeah, I don't think there's a bad option. I'm just trying to figure out how we build it. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with tabling it if you guys are, I, I don't know. Or maybe we don't need to make it as complicated as.
It is going to be sixty degrees until next Wednesday. So you don't have to worry about it till next Wednesday.
For a few days, I don't want to think about snow. Are we good to table it until the December meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
That's, yes, I'm okay with that.
I think you'll get some more input by then too, hear from some families, hear from, you know, the rest of the staff about possibly doing a half-day, you know. So give us some, I think by tabling, you get some more time to get more information, to consider different options and then come back in December with, with an idea maybe of what we actually want to do.
And I think the three of us are definitely presenting that we're all comfortable with some kind of combination. We're not looking to blanket all snow days and go full-on all summer with school or do all remote either. I think, you know, we talk about how resilient everyone is. And I think we just need to support our children, our teachers, and our families. And I think there is something to be said about these kids also having a little bit of time off from some of us too, whether it be a half-day or just a snow day. You know what I mean? So I just want to put that out there as well.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. I think that, you know, could see how the winters, nobody has to make it, I mean, really, you could just let it ride.
For now, yeah. All right. Well, let's table that. And do we need to vote to table it? Do we need to form a vote?
Uh, no.
Okay. The next item is the M B S U Joint Committee Meeting. Do you want me just to read this, John, or is there anything you'd like to share on that?
I'd just say there's a meeting on Tuesday at, Tuesday, November tenth at six o'clock. Just want to make sure one person can be there from Clarksburg at least. If more can be, that's fine. It's basically just a, I, I know that Chairperson Judy Olson asked Jen to set it up that way because it's designed to be, start my negotiations. I would hope we can do it one night, truthfully, and then just vote on it, extend the whole committee's together. But it's because my, my, this is my third year of my initial contract. So my contract runs out on June 30th. We had discussed during the contract negotiation in the spring, but obviously the pandemic kind of intervened. Then it got put in the back burner. So just want to make sure we can get something in place because Jen's going to need that for her budget planning by January, February at the latest. So that's basically, I'm not anticipating a long meeting. There's just a couple of things I'm requesting, just to, you know, I guess a little more of a reason I gotten previously, not much. And just maybe in line with the principles I've been getting. And I'll look at the rollover provision. That's it. So that's something to discuss on Tuesday and hopefully it won't take too long.
John, I'm playing an idea in there.
Oh, good. Thanks.
I am as well, John.
Okay, good news. All right. Glad to hear.
We have Clarksburg covered.
And also thanks for, I mean, the last meeting we have with the Joint Committee. We appreciate your support with the proposal about Jen's salary. So thank you very much for supporting that.
Okay, continuing business, building repairs and renovations. I don't know, Jen, are you still on? And do you have, there you are. Anything you'd like to update us on?
Not a lot to report, other than on Saturday, November 14th, we'll be installing the shelf that goes with the entranceway near Mary's window. The glass has finally come in. We've been waiting for that for a very long time. And we're still closing out the A D A and admin project. And that's about it.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 3rd at five o'clock. Unless there's anything that anyone else has to say at this meeting, I will close it now at six twenty-four PM and wish you all a good rest of your evening.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Night.